I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Rainbow City for Monday, May 12th of 2025. I'm going to ask Brother Cardwell if he'd come and lead us in an invocation, be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this meeting, we ask you to unite our hearts and minds in a common purpose. We thank you for our city and all who work so hard to make it better, especially for those that protect us and enforce the law, and for all of our firefighters and first responders that respond in times of trauma and tragedies. Father, I ask that you would grant our council wisdom to work together effectively and in humility to value each person's perspective, guide their discussions and decisions that they may honor you and focus on what is right. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it. And I'll ask the clerk, Beth Lee, she'll do a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Number five has approved the minutes of the regular meeting of April 28th of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number six is the oath of office for Ian Hammonds, and we're going to let Chief Yancey take over from here. And Ian, if you want to step forward with us. Very excited about this hiring in our police department. Comes from a long line of police officers. I got the chance to work with his dad and granddad and uncle as well. So this is just a really good time for Rainbow City and bringing on somebody that's a great officer. Congratulations. Congratulations, Ian. It's good to have you. Ian, do you want to make a speech or anything? We'll be glad to. Okay. Hey, there you go.
It's definitely a privilege to be working here now. I originally applied here at the beginning of my career. Unfortunately, I did not get hired, but I've got a lot of experience now, working at Gass for three years. I'm definitely excited to bring everything over here that I've learned. I've got lots of support, everybody in my family, especially guys that are already working here. But other than that, that's all I got. Thank y'all.
You're welcome. You brought your own judge with you, too. That's pretty impressive. Judge Skelton's here with you, so we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Number seven, yeah, probably all rise. Is that what they say? Number, number seven is personnel change, and that's to hire Tommy Yates to the Street Department effective Friday, May 23rd of 2025, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that personnel change. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number eight is to accept the bid for surplus items. We didn't have any bids, so we'll, we'll put that off and put it on the agenda for a later date. Number nine is to purchase a 15-foot, heavy-duty rotary cutter for the Street Department with options from Land Pride for $24,012.72. This is a Sourcewell contract item, contract number 062117-LP, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that purchase. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 10 is let the record show that the following vehicles were sold on Gov. deals. That's 2004 Ford F-150 VIN 9503. Last four with, for $1,290. Also, a 2007 Chevrolet Silverado, 1500 VIN. Last four is 9999, and that was for $3,550. And that's just for the record. Number 11 is a sales proposal, and that's that local government corporation to replace the current software, Zortec, with next-gen software to include purchasing payroll and general ledger. The application software, which is multi-user, is $15,911.10, and the annual use and support fee is $13,861.86. The online pay info feature allows employees to be able to view their paycheck, deductions, leave balances, and also it's a W-2 online. The annual use and support fee for this feature will be $721.86 per year based on 106 employees, $6.81 per employee, and I'd entertain a motion that you allow me to enter into that sales proposal. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 12 is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign an agreement for professional services between Rainbow City and Volkerd Incorporated to form a speed study and roadway segment operational evaluation. This study will evaluate lowering the speed limit from 55 to 45 for a half mile to the west of Vivian Lee Maddox Sports Complex entrance and residential area, US Highway 411. This study anticipates the elements of a planned A-trip application by Rainbow City in October of 2025. The proposed scope is to install EB LT turn lane and a right turn lane as well. The cost for this study is $28,500 and should take three, four months for completion, and that would meet the, the needs of the A-trip application, and I'd entertain a motion that y'all allow me that authorization. Is there any discussion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 13 is ordinance number 606 prohibits parking in a fire lane or obstructing fire hydrants, and I would need a motion to introduce this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? I need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a roll call and include me?
Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there any discussion? Clerk will take a roll call and include me.
Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 14 is ordinance number 607. That's final sale ordinance for our bond issue, and same goes for it. I need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk will take a vote and include me.
Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Motion to adopt? Any discussion? Clerk will take a vote and include me.
Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 15 is what we're all here for. That's why we got such a big crowd. Well, I don't know. Ian did pretty good bringing a pretty big pack with him as well, so I don't know. We'll, we'll have a count off in a minute. Somebody will get a snow cone. It's proclamation number 25-03. That's for the Southside High School Boys Soccer Team, 2025, AHSAA, Class 6A State Championship, and that's a mouthful, and it's worth every bit of saying it and saying it out loud. We'd like for you guys to move forward, and we're going to go ahead and let the clerk do the proclamation, and we'll get, get a few pictures, photographs, and, and make sure that you're on the YouTube channel for us.
Whereas, it is with great pride that the mayor and Rainbow City Council notes the athletic accomplishments of the Southside High School Boys Soccer Team, the Panthers, on winning their first-ever 6A AHSAA state soccer championship. And whereas, the Panthers defeated Spanish sport 2-0 at the John L. Hunt Soccer Complex in Huntsville, Alabama, on Saturday, May 10, 2025. And whereas, under the capable guidance of head coach Randy Weiss, assistant coaches Randall Bernard, Daniel Doster, Spencer Bernard, and Julio Herrera, and managers Alex Mello, Lee Sattersfield, Eves Edo, and Henry Knight, the Panthers finished the season with a winning record of 22, 5, and 1, their third straight season with over 20 wins. And whereas, the team members of the Southside High School Panthers are seniors Hayes Cosby, Braxton Sloan, Spencer Cunningham, Jackson Green, Waleed Abasi, Will Argo, Silas Osborne, Cameron Thompson, Grant Weiss, Eli Hammett, Connor Miller, Pranjal Sharma, Ivan Benitez, Hunter Morton, Dallas Butler, and Joel Herrera, juniors Aaron Herrera, William Martin, Miller Joliffe, Trek Gardner, Adriano Alberghena, sophomores Cooper Yancey, Barrett Lindsay, freshmen Dylan Ayala. Whereas, senior team member Cameron Thompson was named as the Tournament Most Valuable Player, and whereas, these senior Panther players amassed a 74-winning percentage over their four years playing together, and whereas, the achievements of this remarkable team and coaches reflect immense honor upon their family, their school, and their entire community, and they are truly deserving of this special recognition. And now, therefore, I, Joe Taylor, Mayor of the City of Rainbow City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 10th, 12th, 2025, as a day to honor the Southside High School Boys Soccer Team, the 2025 AHSAA 6A State Champions.
That is such a big deal. I know everybody here knows that, but you can imagine what that, that carries forward, not just in, in your careers and what you're going to do moving forward, but you know, that's, believe it or not, that's an economic development driver for the city. You know, we're able to go out and say, not only, you know, can, can we put your industry here, your commercial establishment here, but we also have the educational opportunities for kids to go on to be state champions. And so I want you to understand just how much it means to this council, to this city, and to our sister city of Southside. You know, your namesake is Southside, but everybody knows that there's a big portion of this team comes from Rainbow City, and that, that, I cut up with, with Coach Weiss a lot about the fact that he says, you know, promise made, promise kept, as an election thing, but it's actually something that he said last year when you guys came so close. And that's, that's, that's something special to know that you can return back after losing some pretty critical players last year. And you guys, you guys stepped up and, and made that change and turned that whole program back to that winning direction. And I think that, that says way more about you guys than you could ever say about yourselves, and I appreciate you there for that. Coach Weiss, would you want to go ahead and say something now? Or I don't think you're ready, but okay. Okay, well, to keep from, from, from causing that kind of disturbance, I'm going to go ahead and move on with the rest of our agenda, and we'll get back to our comments. But we are very, very proud of you guys and very, very proud of this coaching staff. I got a chance to come up to that, that, that match, and I know absolutely nothing about soccer, but watching the way you guys carry yourself on that field was pretty doggone special, because we saw a team that was very aggressive, that was going after certain things, and they were going after trying to destroy your game plan, and they just weren't able to do it because of the fact that you, you, you knew what your, what your opponent was going to do when you, when you stepped out on the field. I'd said something, I think I said it to Hayes, go out there and do your business, and I think you went out there, and y'all, y'all, y'all had a business meeting, and you came out on top. The negotiation was always on your side, and I appreciate you so much for that. Number 16 is sponsorship request with Etowah Baptist Mission Center fundraising auction for Saturday, August 9th of 2025, at White Springs Baptist Church for 2025, and what would be the pleasure of the council? In 2024, we gave $1,000. What would be the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that will match the thousand we gave last year and give a thousand.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? You did good, Randy. Number 17 is monthly departmental reports. Do we have anybody that, that needs to make a report? I think everything's really going our way right now. We do have some, some notifications that are coming out of our recreation department really, really soon. We're about to do a, a turf conversion, and we're going to turn Vivian Lee Maddox, our rec center, small baseball field, our, up on the hill, the girl softball field, as well as Pioneer Field, and also over going to the track and putting in a regulation-sized soccer field and turf so that we'll be able to practice and play. And, and also included in that is refurbish the track and put in all of the, the, the track boxes, the event boxes. And that's a big deal, because we, we, we have a lot of, of, of track stars, you know, in Southside, and we'd like to be able to know that our kids have a facility that is, that's equal to the reward that they bring back to this city in economic development, and that's, that's something that we're doing and doing in conjunction with our Etowah County Board of Education, hopefully. I'm not trying to speak free. But, so I just want you to know that, that's something that's coming up, and is there anyone else that, that has anything, any other department head? Here are none. We'll go to the council member report. Anybody here that just would like to speak? I mean, this is a pretty big deal. Any of the other coaches that'd like to speak? We're going to give Randy a chance, but I think he's going to break, break down on us, but we're going to give him his opportunity in a few minutes. But, you know, we can get the wife of the coach up here. I know Tanya likes, likes about 20 minutes on the microphone, but would you like to come, Tanya? Because it, it does mean something to us all. Any of the players? Because we want to give you an opportunity. I kind of figured that, but I figured I'd offer it to you anyway. What about the cowbell lady? They talk about, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Yeah, immediate? No? Okay, so we can move forward? No, I appreciate you, and I think we'll go to the comments, and we'll save Mr. Weiss for last, and we'll start with Mr. Hopper.
I had a feeling you was going to do that. First, Ian, I mean, I, son, I've known your family. Your daddy and me went to elementary school together. Me and your granddaddy went to, we were in the first, two of the first three dare officers in Gaston Police Department, went with Tommy, you know, and I've known y'all for years, so I'm excited about y'all being here, just like anytime I see the next generation of it. You know, mine's still stuck up, up north, but he likes it, so he's going to stay up there. But I'm proud that you're here. Next thing, boys, is y'all. If y'all pay attention when I speak at these things, I'm always talking about our kids, always, because you guys are the future. Now, let me explain something to you. Randy Weiss loves you with every inch of his being, because I've stuck with him everything we do, and all he talks about is y'all. I mean, I just thought a soccer ball was some kind of screwed-up, black and white polka-dotted thing that y'all kicked around, but he taught me the rules. But in respect to what the mayor said earlier, what you might not know, if you don't have younger brothers, is the impact Southside Soccer, boys and girls, has on this community. It has put a cramp on baseball, okay? I've got kids, grandkids, who are having to play up in baseball, because everybody wants to play soccer, from what y'all guys have done. That's not a bad thing. That's just, y'all being great leaders in this community as, as young people. You go by Vivian Lee any night, and the soccer fields is packed, okay? My granddaughter just got through going unbeaten. I forget what they called her, says lightning bugs or something. But, you know, they just got through going, and, and, you know, we're having to. Me and my wife's having to learn what soccer really is, because we, we've always played the big three. Our kids played football, basketball, baseball. I've got a grandson who was supposed to be playing his first year of T-ball, and he's having to play coach pitch, because they didn't have enough kids to play T-ball. Wonder why? Because that age group is overloaded in soccer. So, guys, you bring home the trophy, but you've also changed the way we do things in this community athletically. This sport is no longer on the back burner, it's on the front burner, and it's all up to y'all. To continue that on by being a great role model, the seniors are gone, let's see what happens next year. Let's don't, let's don't let this stop at one time. Let's just keep this tradition going. I love to do this every year, and I'm through.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying congratulations to both Ian and to Southside Soccer. One thing that I was thinking about that is applicable to both situations here is the support that it takes to do both of these things, right? Being in law enforcement and doing what you guys have accomplished, you could not do that without the people that are sitting in these rooms, and that includes Coach Weiss down here, and that includes your families that are here with you. It, it takes that support to get those things done. I think Coach Weiss would agree that he couldn't do it without Tanya, and if he doesn't agree, we know that's true. But you guys really should be proud, and your families should be proud, because it's a lot of sacrifice. High school sports is a big sacrifice. It takes a big toll on a family to get these things done. So I want to say thank you to each person here who has supported these young men, for them to be able to attain this accomplishment. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Prince?
Keep mine short. Ian, glad to have you. Very proud to have you in Rainbow City. Sometimes God's plan is not our plan, so that first time didn't take, but we're glad to have you now. You're coming, coming back at a good time, coming back to the best force we, we believe anywhere. So congratulations to you. Randy Weiss, been a friend of mine for a number of years, and I am excited for, I was excited for you guys, but I was excited for him, because you, and I think Councilman Hopper touched on it, the amount of time he spends talking, thinking about you guys. We had a little road trip coming back from Washington DC, and the whole time I couldn't turn the radio on and listen to music, because Randy was on the phone with coaches and different things. It's constant. He pours his life into that, and you guys have poured so much into it, and I know what that thing right there means, because my daughter played in, from 2017, 2016 to 2019, and we played three times at John Hunt Field, and played in the finals twice, and came home without it. So that is a huge accomplishment, and I know you guys understand that now. As you grow older, it'll even have a bigger impact on your life. Like the mayor said, this will propel you to do things in your life that you never dreamed you could do. Who, I mean, really, who dreams that you're just going to be the best team in the state? And you are. Comes with a lot of hard work, and so we congratulate each one of you. To the 17 seniors, the magnitude of what you guys have done for that program over there can't be put into words. It's been said before up here. It's, it's been said before up here. It, it will affect the rest of Southside history for that high school. So thank you for what you've done and all the parents. I've been there. Like I said, I came home crying twice, but I know the sacrifice it takes and so we thank you for all you've done as well. I want to touch on one last thing. The bond issue that we passed tonight and the mayor discussed that about turfing the fields. I, I hope people understand the impact that that will have, not just for the kids that play on it, but economic development. It's been mentioned up here. It, it is a feather in a city's cap to have the best facilities and that's what we're striving for, for this city. So everything we do is calculated. We don't just scare them, scare them, come up here and spend money. We don't, we take seriously the taxpayers' money, but we feel like this is such a great investment to turf those fields where everybody can practice and play on the same fields. I know baseball has always had a, even before they gone down in numbers, but never had a place to practice, couldn't let them practice on the fields. So it's going to be a great thing. So, and that's really all I've got tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, we'll see how this goes. Mr. Weiss?
Hey, let me, let me go ahead and tell you, I've cried enough. I'm just ecstatic right now. First of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for the recognition they've given these young people. One of the things that we emphasize is teamwork. And you know, when you take a group to a hotel, I know I talked to my coaches and we were seriously considering just driving up Saturday morning because these are teenagers. And, and you parents know that and we know that a good teenager is still a teenager. But you know, heard a little noise and about 10:10, 10:15. And it's after he had one, bless his heart, that he got sick. So I hear kids are just too active and I kind of put my ear to the door and they're going over videos of the games and the film.
Yeah, I knew it.
No, but look, I mean, you know what? To see kids doing that and to hear kids doing that and the next morning get this detailed, what they think the game plan is, which mirrored basically what all of us coaches did, but they bought in as a group, a cooperative effort. These kids know how to play and they, and that comes from the fact that their parents, as Councilman Prince said, their parents have bought in and made sure they got the appropriate training along the way. You know, when you have that kind of a mechanism working, success is the, is, is the absolute byproduct of that. And that, and that's what happens. And that's very similar to what we do here on this council. We have, we have leadership and then we discuss the right way to do things and what's going to come out with the best possible conclusion. And whether it be turfing baseball fields or whether it be turfing a, I mean redoing a track, turfing a soccer field, whether it be the sports complex, which you guys, a lot of the things that the great teams, especially the girls teams that we've had in the past, they didn't have large fields to practice on. And a lot of times, not their fault, but they'd be quitting on balls that were going out of bounds. You guys have played as much on 70 and 75 yard fields as you have on our field. So that's, you know, that's a testimony to what the planning up here has done. And not only that, and, and I'm glad the mayor mentioned this and the other members of the council, it's not just about sports and recreation, it's about quality of life. And if I own Acme Widget Works and I'm looking for a city to come to, I'm going to bring employees to that city and I want to see what their schools are, what their athletic programs are, what their recreational quality of life facilities are. And all of those are a key determinant in whether or not these people come to Rainbow City or Southside or wherever. And guys, again, I've told you how much you mean to me. We don't have to keep doing that because you know I love you. Especially the one and I'll two, love him a little bit more than the rest, but, but I do love y'all. But if you've been around, you wouldn't know it, you wouldn't know it because.
You're talking about Cameron.
No, Cameron, yeah, and Grant, right? No, but. But, uh, yes, but, but having said that, you know, you can ask any guys on this team, you know, I don't do daddy ball and, and Grant found out the hard way last year.
And I was lobbying for you, Grant, just so you'll know.
He really was. He goes, you got to get number 12 out there. I said, not, not till he changes, fixes some things. But anyway, but these guys have worked through and persevered and they deserve these accolades. I don't. I get paid to do this, but I love it. I would pay to do it. I, I want to make that clear, but it, I don't think Tanya would let me pay to do it. But, uh, but guys, you do this for nothing other than the love of the game, the love of your communities and the love of your families. And when the biggest problem we have is families getting too excited and we don't have any problems. Okay? But again, congratulations, Ian. It's, it's, we're so glad to have you. And, um, and again, thank you, Mayor Taylor and the council. Councilwoman Bedwell has had a, a family situation and, and I wish she was here to enjoy this, but I also know that her hearts, she needs to know that her hearts and her prayers are with her as she's going through this time of mourning. And basically, love you guys and that's all I got. Thank you.
That's, that's good and we appreciate you, Randy. Appreciate all, what you've done for this, this team and, and what you do for this city. We know that, that just last week we lost Deborah Overby. She was a police officer with the city of Rainbow City for many, many years and she had a long bout with cancer and succumbed to that last week. And we just want to send out our prayers and our condolences to her family. She was a good officer for this city and, and always believed in what we were doing and continued to believe the same thing in our current police force. That bond issuance, Jeff covered it very well. I won't, I won't belabor the point, but this is a game changer for our area. It's going to allow our kids to practice and play. We were sending them out to these little pastures and, and whatever dad could come up with a spot for them to be able to take infield or, 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 you know, work, work their soccer game up. And we know that we were losing some days as far as soccer was concerned, based on weather alone. And we, we know now that we're going to be able to put our kids out there and allow them that great advantage of being able to play in the weather, which is, I didn't realize you guys were just going to go out there and play in a storm, but which made no sense because that always made the baseball wet, heavy and you couldn't hit it. But anyway, that's all I ever knew was baseball. So, and one of my proteges was the judge over here and, and probably the fastest person I'd ever seen in my life, but couldn't catch a cold, couldn't hit the broadside of the barn, but he could steal a base with the best of them, I promise you that. No, I'm just kidding. He was a great baseball player as well. The last thing is when you go to these, these soccer matches and stuff, you just don't realize what that fan base looks like. Southside doesn't travel like a normal soccer team and we saw that, you know, on, on all, all fields that were being played up there. Southside travels like it's football. And, and I think that's a great commentary of not only the parents, which, you know, they kind of have to be there, I get that part, but also on the community that shows up and makes sure that you guys are supported. You were well-supported Saturday. That place was loud and it was obnoxious at times, but it was such a good time. And, and in that thing, I got to make a friend. I'm, I met Mr., Mr. Sharma and he and I ended up having just a different type of relationship now, but I'll leave that just where it is, but I wanted you to know that he was so excited for you. And, and that was just such a good time and it ended very, very well. So with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Congratulations again.